So, agenda review and disposition. Is there anything to add to the agenda tonight?
I'm just gonna wait till
Oh, sorry.
the group comes in here. Let me, so everybody can hear.
I'm already left.
Oh. Just a reminder to put your mics on mute. For those of you participating by Zoom. Seen too many people make that mistake. I do not have anything to add or take away from the agenda.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Minutes of June 10th, 2021, and June 22nd, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Anyone want a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Fran, do you, you have a question? Yes.
I think she said aye.
Oh, aye? Okay, perfect. All right. Those are approved. Thank you very much. Privilege of the floor, number one. Evan, I'm excited for you to present. So, is he gonna be waiting? We're gonna wait?
He's gonna wait one sec.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Under principals' report.
Under principals'. Okay, perfect. Wasn't sure when he was gonna do it. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on privilege of floor number one? I hope everyone's having a fun summer so far. Back to school! Can't wait. Okay. All right, well, we'll move on. Principals' report.
So, we are going to start tonight with a presentation from Evan Duchet. He is a recent PES graduate and award winner at graduation this year. And he is presenting a plan for a new school sign. And I'm gonna let him take it over.
Okay, so, I have some papers for the school board.
Thank you.
So, in thinking of my Eagle Scout project, I wanted to get back to Plymouth Elementary School. I've spent my last nine years of education here and wanted to do something to help out. I noticed that the current school sign was small, really low to the ground, and really hard to see. It was, it's also not in the school colors. When I walked up to, closer to it, I noticed that it was deteriorating and in need of repair. I had first thought about just raising the height, but after talking with marble signs, they encouraged me to think about replacing it because after 30 years, it's time. I think that this will enhance the impression of the school and provide a positive appearance upon entering the school. I've shared this with the superintendent, the SAU facilities manager, and the PES principal, who have guided me to present to the school board. I have, I've spoken to and met with marble signs numerous times to get designs and pricing. I have spoken with the town zoning manager to ensure that a taller sign is permissible, and it is. I've also met with the Eagle Board to get this approved, pending funding, and the school board approval. I've attached details and pricing, details and pricing. Fundraising is difficult, especially with the current pandemic. So, I'm asking that you consider funding this, this needed project, and I will manage it with my Eagle counselor in coordination with school administrators. I will also fundraise as much as I can to offset any costs needed. If you look over here at this slideshow, the first picture is what the school sign looks now, looks like now, and the second picture is what I'm hoping for it to become. On the second page of the pamphlet, it describes what the sign is and the pricing for what I would do. And what I'm planning on doing with the sign is to enlarge the sign to 60 inches by 40 inches, and for it to be two inches thick, and double-sided wood card, and wood cards laddering, and to raise this whole sign up off the ground to a height of two feet instead of one foot. And I'm hoping to also add landscaping and possibly lighting with existing electricity. Thank you.
Good job. Take a, take a deep breath.
You did a good job. Thank you for coming to present. Do you guys have any questions for Evan?
Quick one, Evan. Is the sign gonna be made of wood?
Yes.
It is. Okay.
Can I ask, what, what did you say the cost was? I didn't hear that.
Oh, yeah, you don't have that piece of paper in front of you, Fran. The price for the one that they're suggesting is $3,230. And that just includes the sign. Is that correct, Evan? That does include installation or any of the additional things?
The number's down the line.
Okay. So, if the posts are donated, Fran, it would be $4,430.
But the maximum total would be $5,030.
Do you have someone in mind that you've talked to about donating the posts?
I haven't gotten to that point yet. I just wanna get it approved by you.
I think he's looking to move forward with the project. If the board is okay with that.
I like it.
Yeah.
I think it looks great.
Yep. Think it'd be a good addition to the front.
I think so, too.
Yeah.
So, does someone wanna make a motion to approve Evan's?
To approve it?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of approving Evan's new sign and Eagle Scout project for Plymouth Elementary School? Say aye.
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 Perfect. Congratulations.
Good job.
Thank you. Good job, Evan.
Good job.
So, so just to clarify.
Yes.
How, how much do you need from the board financially? Is that what we're looking for?
Right, so that would be a maximum, and he can fundraise as well, he gets fundraise approval and such, but he wasn't sure how much he could fundraise, too. So, that would be the maximum.
So, worst-case scenario is about $5,000.
Kyla, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is that something we could use that care money for?
No, not really the sign. It's not really pandemic prevention. Unless I can unless it's for visibility purposes. That would be a real, a real stretch. But thank you for the suggestion.
Thank you. Nice job.
Thank you.
Good job. Excited about the new sign. All right.
So, I have a somewhat brief principal's report. We have about 410 students that we expect for all in-person learning. As you know, we are not offering virtual learning this year. We have moved our school registration to the digital platform, and some directions went home last week, as well as written directions via a school mailing. So, via, so two sets of directions have gone home, one through school messenger and one through regular mail. And we would like to encourage everyone to go ahead and do the registration. We are fine-tuning that process in the middle of, you know, rolling this out. So, we're gonna make some changes this week to try to make it as easy as possible. Wanted to let you know, in terms of our positive school culture, we are planning to continue our monthly themes. We are going to bring back traditional field trips. The overnight trips are ready to go and booked. And we are looking this year to really engage our middle schoolers as leaders and drivers, drivers of our school culture. Wanted to update you on two big goals for this coming school year. One is to grow our academic achievement. We're gonna do that by strengthening fidelity of the Intu Math Instruction, which is our new math program, and supporting that with Math Fact Fluency. We are going to examine the literature and research behind the science of reading and develop a K-4 literacy plan. All staff will be engaged in building data literacy for themselves in order to increase student achievement. And we are going to explore and strengthen the science curriculum instruction assessment, grades three to five and six to eight. So, we'll work on developing scope and sequence for both of those two grade spans. Second big area of goal, or goal area, is to strengthen emotional and behavioral supports. We'll be doing that. We have about 20 staff engaged in a, a in-person webinar next, or in-person training here in the building next week for two days with a consultant named Polly Bath. She's gonna help us work on classroom strategies to support emotional and behavioral needs of kids. And Brian Schian and myself will be working to implement the DESA system, which is a universal screening for social and emotional competencies, and then building through that screening, identifying kids who need a little support in one area or another. I do not have any summer student shout-outs, except for Evan. Would like to thank all of the summer school staff and the extended school year staff for a really amazing job this summer of continuing to prioritize our children and the learning. Want to let you know that the parents and the PTA is planning a picnic event this year for the evening open house event. So, rather than doing, the plan is at this point, than rather than doing a big barbecue where food is shared, that we would do a bring-your-own picnic event. Wanna thank the custodial staff and the grounds crew from Parks and Rec for cleaning and sprucing up the building and the grounds. I don't know if you came in, you might have realized there's some posts are missing, and grass got planted, and the front of the building is looking really beautiful. And our, and our building is very clean and tidy. I wanted to update the entire community around some logistics. We are planning to keep our drop-off and pickup as it was last year. We felt that that was a very orderly plan. We really knew where kids were. They were well-supervised, and we knew where they were going at the end, end of the day. We are returning to a five-day-a-week traditional schedule, so we will no longer have the six-day-a-week schedule here at Plymouth Elementary School. We want to let you know that we are expanding our before-school program. It's gonna be, instead of just for the middle school being asked, which is academic support for kids, it's gonna be a K through eight program where it's academic support before school. There'll be a little more structured goal-setting. And if people need to register for, for that, they should get in touch with our main office, not Parks and Rec. It's, the registration is gonna happen through our building this year. Specifically Lori Cleary, so. We want to let you know that the playground is gonna be open after school for parent supervision. So, we feel like it's important to get kids back on the playground outside playing, and that will be open after school. The lunchroom is gonna be open as it was at the end of last year with alternating seating. So, that is our plan around all of those logistical pieces. Just wanna check one thing. In terms of upcoming events, we have the teacher in-service that I described a moment ago, next week. And then we have teacher professional days on August 24th, 25th, and 26th. The primary open house, which is for grades kindergarten first and second, is August 26th at 10:00 a.m., 10:00 to 10:45. And new student tours, so any parents or students who would like to tour the building is, those will also be held August 26th at 1:00 p.m. We do ask that you register for the tours so that we know how many kids are coming. You can just call the main office, and we'll put you on the list. The first day of school is August 30th, and it will be a Monday schedule. Not a day three, not a day one, but a Monday schedule. Also, wanted to announce tonight that on September 2nd, we will have the grade three through eight open house, and that will be when the PTA is hosting the picnic on the fields. So, stay tuned for more details about that, but it will be September 2nd, which is a Thursday. And that is my update for you after non-public session. I do have some, you know, we'll have a lot of nominations in non-public.
Okay. I have some questions. The before-ask program, what time will that start?
7:30.
And then the regular drop-off, 8:25?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
And we're gonna do our very best to accommodate as many families as we can. And we'll get it creative, as creative as we can, but I do recommend that people call early. If you, if you need that for work, call early.
Okay. Thank you. Does have any questions?
Do we know how big the kindergarten class is gonna be? About how many students?
It, we've only gotten one additional person since, I think we're 28 or 29, so. But this next stretch, the next three weeks are the time when we will get our unknown registr, for the first day. Yes. And then, two weeks after that.
Yeah. Okay.
So, right now, about 30, but, you know, probably higher from August 30th.
Fran, do you have any questions? Okay. Thank you. All right.
Okay. So, a couple of updates about the athletics piece of everything. Preseason sports are scheduled to begin Mon, yeah, Monday, August 23rd, and that'll be football, soccer, and volleyball. The following day on the 24th, field hockey. And then cross-country will start on the first day of school on August 30th. And currently, on our school website, all of the preseason dates and times, game schedules are all posted. Anybody still looking for permission forms and information, that's all there as well. I know we've, I've got a lot of forms already coming in, still a lot to go. But at the original initial sign-ups, we had about 140 athletes signed up. So, good numbers, which is good to see. In terms of sports physicals, those will be offered September 8th here at Plymouth Elementary from 8:30 to 11:00 for anyone still needing them. We hope this year to get back to working with John Brewley from the high school and Deb McManus to complete our concussion baseline testing. We incorporate that into the health classes a couple of years ago, which has worked out great. And that way, we get all the kids and not just the kids that are playing sports. Working on sport team photos, so when that information comes along, we'll post that on the website as well. In terms of safety committee, I hope, did you get the emergency management plan sent in an email to you? Okay. Well, that has been revised and reviewed, safety committee members, and it was shared with our local chief of police and fire chief as well for them to go through. Essentially, only things that have changed in it are some of our safety partners, just the matching up of our faculty members. And I did give you a couple of sheets at the bottom there, a few new appendants have been added. And that has come at the suggestion of the New Hampshire Department of Homeland Security. They review our plan, and they had suggested that information in terms of the drills that we've done and the training that we've done. So, these are things that we have, if you look through and see, it's been ongoing, things that we've done. And with training our whole faculty and staff, along with the safety committee, now it's just gonna be added and incorporated into that plan so that it's visible there in the plan. So, I had brought along, just, we normally sign off on that every year. Kyla and Amy and I have the fire chief, police chief, myself and Tanya sign off on that.
And the updates are given to you every year, so generally Amy, I think, signs off on it. Not the whole board, right?
No, just the chair.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. So, if you're comfortable with those additions
I sure am.
updates, then that's good.
And then the other piece we had mentioned earlier was the E-Lerts app was expiring in July. And so, now we are with InformaCast. And at our administrative retreat for the SAU, our, all of our principals and admin team have that added onto their phones. And when we return back with our teacher meetings, we hope to scoot in a little time in there to get them all to have it added onto their smartphones and give a little bit more information about that. And then lastly, all of the classroom emergency folders have all been taken out, revised, refreshed, and put back in their classrooms, so those are ready to go. And our first safety committee meeting will be Wednesday, September 1st, when we come back.
Should we change the, where it says E-Lerts in the appendix to, or this is
Oh, did I miss one?
This is previous year, so it's okay.
Yes, that's, yeah, those are all the drills from last year.
All right, fantastic. Nope.
Yeah, that was one thing I did, went through and changed. Anything that was E-Lerts over to InformaCast.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right. Good deal. Moving back, moving on. Consent items. Everyone signed off on that. Perfect. Is there any correspondence, Kyla?
Not for public.
All right. And next on the docket is discussion items, COVID update review of the updated plan.
So, I thought we were gonna be able to take this off the agenda at some point, but no. There has been a lot of news on the COVID front over the past few weeks or month. So, we have been diligently speaking with Department of Health and Human Services to make sure we are doing what is right for the day. So, really, what this is, you've already approved a plan, so I don't need approval tonight. You approved it back in June. Basically, giving me the authority to adjust mitigation strategies per the recommendations of the New Hampshire Department of Health. What we have always done is followed the New Hampshire Department of Health, not necessarily the blanket statements by the CDC or the American Academy of Pediatrics. I think that we had discussed even last summer, they were a little too broad in the recommendations. And, you know, I know one of their recommendations was to have students and teachers masked. We never had a blanket at all masking. There was always adjustments of when kids can take them off, breaks inside, outside, the whole deal. So, as of today, and we have a meeting coming up Wednesday, so this, this might change. And I sent out a video to all families today with the updates. But everything's posted as well because it is hard to go through everything specifically each time. So, we will update them as soon as possible. And if there's any major change, especially around the more controversial topics like masking or vaccinations and, and stuff like that, then I will, I will get on and either send out something in writing. Tanya always sends up some, sends out something as well. And then we will do a video update, even if it's not a full week past the, the last recommendation. So, for right now, just, just in general, we look at our community data, meaning our towns and our SAU. So, you'll notice that, you know, Grafton County may be on the state dashboard as substantial. And it really is a couple of other towns, such as Hanover, some of the towns up north, too. So, that's what we based a lot of our decisions on last year, is just what's going on within our communities. So, in-school transmission is one of them, and then our community spread as well. So, right now, we have a handful of communities that have one case and a handful that, that have zero cases at this point. But that can change, too, as well as the recommendations from the Department of Health. So, in June, it's still, as of today, masks are optional in all settings. So, that's that piece. The other piece is we're looking at, you know, physical distancing. It was, remember, we were really at six feet, at the beginning of the pandemics, we switched to three. That seemed to be, with the more data that came out, they liked the three. It doesn't mean we're not gonna be in groups. I want to be honest that kids are going to interact this year. And if, both inside and outside as well. So, that's something that, that we will be moving forward with. But if they're in a whole group in the classroom, the desks will be set up three feet apart, at least. The other piece, that's a big change, is the screenings, which we, we've never really went overboard with the screening except for parents can, parents were supposed to screen their kids for symptoms. And, and typically, if somebody came with symptoms, most parents know, they got a call, and you're out for 10 days or negative COVID test. That is no longer in place. In fact, Department of Health did not recommend screenings, as they said they weren't very accurate. So, we're right back to our school policies that we typically have. Child is sick, they stay out, they have a fever. I don't have it word for word in my head, but I, you know, you're not supposed, they're supposed to be off medication for 24 hours before returning, hopefully. So, the other piece is we cannot require a test, a negative test, to return. So, that's in consultation with the physician or whoever the child is checking in with, if they want to do that. So, it's really taking the school back to not supervising that piece. Ventilation, that's something we've been working on the entire time. Our schools are in very good shape as far as ventilation and air quality control. Doesn't seem like it, tonight is a little humid. We are. The other piece, continuing hand washing and respiratory etiquette, that is something that, you know, is modeled in, and seems to most, from what I've heard, most teachers have put that into practice.
Scheduled.
Scheduled in the day, which is, which has helped in general with germs. Big change in contact tracing. Department of Health is no longer contact tracing. So, if your child sits next to somebody on a bus within three feet, with or without him, I mean, you all remember it. It's just kids were out for 10 days at a time, or that is not gonna happen anymore. The only recommendation, the latest guidelines are if, if a child tests positive or somebody within their household, then they're expected to quarantine if they're unvaccinated. So, that's, that's, that, that's the guidance we give. We can't really verify vaccination status, which I'll get into a little bit in our legislative updates. But that's, that's what that piece is. Cleaning and disinfection, we're gonna continue to provide the cleaning every night, as well as the disinfection. We have, I mean, we've, we've put in all kinds of things that, that we'll continue to move forward with. So, I don't need approval, but I just wanted to update you with that piece. There's always, obviously, a lot of questions and a lot of difference of opinions in this realm. So, I'm sure you will get questions on, any questions on what's happening?
I do have a question on contact tracing. DHHS isn't doing it, but they weren't doing much of ours last year anyway. If we get cases, will, will we continue to do contact tracing?
We will not do contact tracing. And, and that is a little bit based on
I don't anticipate much of a need.
Yeah, of the confidentiality pieces that were put in place by the legislature this past June and July.
All right.
So, there's a lot, we, we knew, we were able to ask all these pieces, and now, now they've kind of taken that away, which it is health information, so I do understand that.
If a student does have to be out for 10 days, are we supporting them with remote learning?
Yes, all students will be supported if they're out sick for any reason.
Okay.
Yeah. But we aren't offering a separate it's gonna be, if, if, if parents are still not comfortable sending students to school based on the mitigation strategies we have in place, there is homeschooling, and then there's also virtual learning that opened up K and up. So, I'm sure there's plenty of spaces this year. Remember, we had talked about the virtual, the remote learning last year, they were full. They really didn't have the capacity to offer that. That is offered now. So, whenever families are ready to come back, we're happy to have them back. We just don't have it in the budget to have additional staffing at this point for that piece. Any other questions?
I don't. Fran, do you have any other questions?
No.
No.
Yeah. And like I said, this may change Wednesday, but we'll, I will, that's why I would like the, that's why it's nice to have the authority to move quickly.
Me, too.
So, you can do that. Yeah.
All right.
And every district may be different because it's local control in New Hampshire, so.
All right. And then legislative?
Yeah, so there's a couple of things that have come out that I wanted to update you on. One is, first, which I talked about a little bit, is vaccine status. We, we're given, after school got out, guidance from the Department of Ed, that we are not allowed to ask anybody's vaccination status, regardless if they're eligible or not. So, that's something that we'll communicate to our teachers, obviously to the community. That's just something we're not able to do at this point. The other piece is, you know, with masks, and it's why we've kind of drifted away The other piece is, you know, with masks, and it's, it's why we've kind of drifted away from the optional, or from the required to the optional. And I think if we, if we move down that spectrum towards recommended, you don't necessarily need medical documentation anymore. If the child feels uncomfortable, the, the guidelines have opened up that basically if, if you're not comfortable wearing a mask, you don't have to wear it, which previously it was really tied into our disciplinary system. And I think there's, there's a lot of movement to getting away from that piece, which I'm sure you've heard of that as well. The educational freedom account, so, so that is school choice. There's a couple laws embedded into the statewide budget. There is a school choice at this point, just getting your adequacy checked. So that's something you should be aware of. So you may not see any huge financial implications with that at this point. We don't manage that. If a parent wants to send their child to a private school or parochial school, it, they can use that money for that purpose. So that's the biggest change there. I'm not sure how it will fit this community. There's not a lot of choices as far as, you know, multiple charter schools and like a Manchester and down south, it may affect their adequacy a little bit more. The less we have enrolled, the less adequacy we get. The only other piece I wanted to bring up is I'm sure you've heard about critical race theory or divisive topics. So that is a new law that was passed prohibiting schools to teach critical race theory. Now, it takes a while to get into the details of this, but we have been given a technical advisory from the Department of Ed as well as something to share with teachers as far as what that means or what is divisive. So I won't go through all the details here, but I did want to give you that update. In case you hear about it, it does come to board meetings sometimes, but there is a law in New Hampshire that we cannot, it's phrased around not critical race, but divisive topics. So that's, that's the piece as well. So if you have any questions on any of that, I'm happy to answer them, but I just thought I would update you. There's a lot coming at us fast and furiously outside of COVID as well. So we will update you as much as possible if there's anything else that comes in as far as regulations or anything like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Is that somewhere on the New Hampshire school board? Is it somewhere that we can read about that if we want?
Yeah, it's right on the New Hampshire school board's resources. And we can send that to you as well.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and it's on the Department of Ed website from the commissioner as far as what that means. And it's pretty detailed, so. Anything else?
There's, there's, there's room for interpretation here, too.
There is, yeah. Yeah. We were given very specific guidelines, but, in schools, but you're right, it is room for interpretation. And I don't, I would anticipate you're going to get questions about it at some point. So it's just something that we've had to do a lot of research on, on our understanding. And if anybody ever asks about what we're teaching, all of our curriculum is on the SAU 48 website, and it's all public knowledge. So it's there for anybody's viewing.
All right. Thank you.
I think it got really ugly at one of the other fairly local school boards a few months ago, some discussions around that, one I heard.
Yeah. And it pops up out of nowhere sometimes, so I always like to give folks the heads up.
All right. Any other business?
The only other thing I had is if we can pick a September board meeting, your next board meeting falls on Labor Day. So I was hoping, that, that sounds good.
No, 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 that's not.
I almost missed this one.
I can't.
Is the select board meeting? Do we know what dates this? I know we've run into that before, rescheduling.
The select board meeting is tonight.
I mean, there's one tonight.
It'll be every other Monday.
So that one's probably the 13th.
Yeah.
Which will be the next Monday after Labor Day.
So do we want to do the 20th?
20th.
Or you can do, do you want to stick with Monday? If you go to the 20th, it's, can you do Tuesday, the 14th?
I can.
I cannot.
No, I can't do Tuesday, the 14th. What about another night that first week of September?
I can do Tuesday.
I mean, I can do September 1st, which is a Wednesday. And that's, gives you the first week of school that we can check. You can't do that one?
I can't do that.
Okay.
Seven, eight, nine. Yeah, I can do any of those.
The 8th? Is that what you said?
I can do the 8th.
I can do the 8th.
Fran, can you do the? Okay.
Yes.
September 8th.
Wednesday, September 8th.
September 8th, 6 o'clock.
And just to back up a little bit, we did the union, Tanya had met with the union on the plan as well, so they've been supportive of that if I'm speaking correctly.
Thank you.
All right. Was there any other business besides that? No? Okay. Privilege of the floor, number two. Anyone like to speak?
Question.
Yeah.
Evan and I were talking about fundraising for the project, and he had talked about possibly doing a movie night for families or kids to come, and he would talk with Mrs. Orlando more about that. But are there certain rights or permissions you have to have to show a movie? Does the school have that permission or?
Not universally, but we have some.
Usually we have to get the permission.
We have to get permission, so we would have to work with Mrs. Wilkie to see what we have permission for.
Is that something we have to pay for, you mean?
Possibly.
Possibly.
We can touch base with Mrs. Wilkie, though.
Maybe a rerun of something good.
Can I just ask a clear question? I knew you said pick up and drop is the same as if our buses being restricted again? Do we know what's happening?
There is, capacity is not being restricted on the buses. Federal, so this is good, I'm glad you asked that question because masks are required federally per TSA and on buses. Although buses cannot refuse students' access if there's no mask, but there's no capacity limitations other than what they were before. Like whatever the capacity of the buses is what it is.
So they don't have to, like, rage?
No, yeah. So last year we encouraged parents to do drop-off. They could take the buses as needed now. Although if you know of any bus drivers, I know there's still, there's a critical shortage of bus drivers, so anybody. Yeah, so.
So will they be able to take the bus to the med center now?
That's something that Tanya can work out with the bus company.
See how much.
If there's form of the bus, I mean, but regular numbers, so I would assume yes.
Yes.
I just have a question about the whole critical race theory. Some of it is divisive, et cetera, but some of it is still historical and important to teach. I mean, I learned about Anne Frank in seventh grade, and it really stuck with me. Is that considered divisive?
We can still teach about history.
Okay.
Historical events. The, the guidelines are pretty clear. We can teach about all historical events and even, you know, current events as well, I think.
As long as you're teaching facts about the events, not your opinions about the events. So that's kind of the concept behind it, a little?
It's that, right.
I would, I would see the documents.
Yep.
Okay. And is that posted on the, in the state?
It's posted on the Department of Ed for, for that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
History is written by factors.
Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak? I just forget there's people watching me. All right. Cool. Want to make a motion to go into non-public?
So moved.
Seconded.
Sorry.
All in favor of going into non-public? Aye?